I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of Thursday, April 24th, 2025. Remind everyone to please silence your phones and if you have any item that you would like to speak on, please fill out a blue slip at the rear of the room and turn that in to staff here before the item comes up. We'll have the invocation and pledge allegiance, Mr. Hayes.
Lord, we thank you for this opportunity tonight to worship you and follow your lead in whatever, whatever decisions we have to make. Lord, we just emerged from Easter season. Once again, we saw the wonder of your son, Jesus. We saw the magnificence of your precious teachings in all of our lives. We ask that you be with us tonight. You guide us tonight in the decisions that we make. In Jesus' precious name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Roll call, please, Ms. Wallace.
Mr. Abshire?
Here.
Mr. Andrew Pont?
Here.
Mr. Barti?
Here.
Mr. Bowers?
Here.
Mr. Burley?
Here.
Ms. Easton?
Here.
Mr. Guillory?
Here.
Mr. Hayes?
Here.
Mr. Landry?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Markentail?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Stelly?
Here.
President Barris?
Here, thank you.
You have a quorum.
All right, item one, 1A, appearance by Mr. Marshall Simeon Jr., candidate for mayor of the city of Lake Charles. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, and thank you, President Barris and, well, jurors. My name is Marshall Simeon. I'm a candidate for mayor of the city of Lake Charles. See, I'm not the most important person here since you have some state champions in the audience. But I just wanted to come by, introduce myself, say that I've worked with you guys before on a couple of occasions. The first one was when I first got on the Lake Charles City Council. You know, I got, we got sworn in in July of 2005. Hurricane Katrina hit New Orleans in August and Rita hit here in September. So, we worked together as a city and a parish to bring our people back together and build ourselves a very strong community. And I think when I got off the city council, we had the strongest economy in the United States. So, I went home and was going to take it easy until my police juror, James Mayo, passed away. And then I was honored to be selected by this body to finish out the one year of his term, which allowed my community to time to grieve and collect themselves so that they could elect their representative, who was Mr. Calvin Collins and now Mr. Smith. So, I enjoyed that service because at that time, that's when we were really growing, where the economy was growing so much, we were dealing with man camps and full employment and people coming in and taking jobs and everything else. So, I'm a candidate for mayor of the city of Lake Charles because I think we're, everything comes full circle in cycles. You know, we've gone through another set of hurricanes. But during, in the meantime, I wound up sitting on the State Board of Commerce and Industry, charged really with jump-starting the state of Louisiana's economy after the pandemic. And in the process of doing that, we had a number of LNG projects come through, even though there was a moratorium in place, and we authorized about $60 billion worth of LNGs. And now with the new administration, the Trump administration having lifted that moratorium, we're seeing that those things are starting to come out the pipeline again. So, the same things that we were dealing with back when I, the last time I got to serve with you, it's going to come back others, but it's going to be even stronger because the economist Lauren Scott said that, I think he said there was about 10,000 LNG jobs in this area and expect that to jump to about 50,000. That's unprecedented for any place in the United States, much less southwest Louisiana. So, I'm praying, I'm working hard to earn the vote and respect of all of our people to become the next mayor of the city of Lake Charles. But I especially look forward to working with this body again as we go on that path to again become the strongest economy in the United States. And the reason why is because, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty that's coming out of Washington as to whether there's going to be a FEMA anymore, you know? And whether that goes to the states, then how does that play out? I know that when Rita hit, we had Katrina, so we had a lot of attention here. But these hurricanes, storms, they don't respect boundaries. So, what happens if something happens here and happens in Houston? Do we, are we a stepchild of Texas? What happens if something happens to New Orleans and us? Are we a stepchild of New Orleans? Or if something happens to us in Lafayette, God forbid? So, I'm, my interest in coming in and working with you all is to recognize and fulfill the full breadth of southwest Louisiana so that when these things do come in and play, people are going to recognize the strength that we bring to the country, but also the vibrancy and the culture of our community. So, I really do look forward to you and I do, I do thank you for having me over because I just wanted to reintroduce myself. Some of you I did get a chance to work with, a lot of new faces, but I see the talent is still in the room, so I'm feeling pretty good about that. But, and if there's any questions, please let me know.
Mr. Landry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a question, but I just want to say thank you for being here with us tonight. And I was one that served with you in the past. I know when you were on the city council and you've always been very, very easy to talk to and to work with and you've got a positive attitude and I certainly wish you well. I pray for you every night.
And see, we're in God's problems.
I'm going to keep praying.
Yes.
And I know you do a good job.
Yes, we will. And then for those that don't know, we're already in the, I call it the election week. Some people call it early voting. I think that means you can kick the can down the road. So, we call it the election week because you don't know what's going to happen on the election day, May 3rd. So, I encourage everybody to go ahead and vote now and speak their voice because it's very important. Because as we speak here, we're going to send the messages to the places that need to know that, that we are southwest Louisiana and that we are strong. Okay? Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Marshall. Thank you, Mr. Simeon. All right. All right, item 1B, presentation of certificates to the Hamilton Christian School Boys Basketball Team in recognition of winning the 2025 Louisiana High School Athletic Association Select Division Four State Championship. Doesn't that sound good? Yeah, I got that helmet. He even got my hat, too, man. All right. So, we still on a victory lap? How we doing? We doing good?
Yes, sir.
Coach Washington, I mean, Coach Dex. That's what he says, Coach Dex. This is a certificate of recognition presented by the Calhousie Parish Police Juror on this 24th day of April, 2025, to you, head coach of Hamilton Christian Schools Boys Basketball Team for a victorious season and winning the 2025 LHSAA Division Four Select Marsh Madness Basketball State Championship. Congratulations on your accomplishment and on a job well done.
Thank you.
To the police jury, to the members, to the visitors, and to, more importantly, my basketball team and parents who are always there with us. It is indeed an honor to represent southwest Louisiana. It's been a long, long journey for this group. We've been to the top 28 for the last seven years. And, you know, on the seventh day, everything is completed. And this year was our seventh trip. And as we were walking in the building, I started looking at the players and we have a few of them on vacation because school is out. And I started looking at them all and I started saying, this is a team that won a state championship. And when you see them, you'll wonder, how did they do it? But the one thing that I really admire the most about this group was the unity, the cohesiveness, and the family structure that we had this year was unlike anything I've ever had. I've been coaching over 30 years and this was the one group that I always said didn't have a chance to win, and this was the group that won a state championship for Hamilton Christian, the first one ever. And just to represent southwest Louisiana with a lot of pride and dignity and integrity and what I want my kids to always understand, being in this moment, being in a situation and around people that may not have ever seen before or been around before, is that we are a classy operation and we always want to be around classy people as yourself. Thank you very much.
We're going to get, we're going to get you gentlemen to come up here for a photograph.
And also, I'd like to say, we do have to state, two things happened for us this year that never happened. I was honored to be selected as the coach of the year in the state of Louisiana. And Javon Vital, raise your hand. Javon, Javon, raise your hand. Javon Vital, sophomore, was also selected as the player of the year in the state of Louisiana. And for all you LSU fans, he's also been offered a scholarship by LSU and among other big schools. That's a LSU guy right there.
Coach, how many, how many seniors do you have on your team, Coach? How many seniors?
Four. Four. Four seniors and this guy here was probably the best student we had, you believe.
I've seen his picture in the paper. All right.
Where's your center at, Coach? Where's your center at?
Right here. Everything else.
Here. One, two, three? One, two, three?
Mr. President, if I may, you know, we're talking about marsh, marsh madness, you know, at our, at our coliseum. So, shout out to Mr. Barnes for a job well done hosting that. Very nice.
All right. Move on to 2A. All right, item 2A, approve applications for liquor and beer permits. Staff recommends approval of one renewal application and ratification of one special event permit. I have a motion by Mr. Abshire and a second by Mr. Burley. Any question? Any objection? That item carries. 2B, adopt an ordinance rescinding ordinance number 7840, which ordered demolition and removal of one house located at 2966 Burke Stett Road in Carles. I got a motion by Ms. Easton and a second by Mr. Quinn. Any question? Any discussion? That item carries. 2C, authorize the director of division and planning and development to notify the following property owners to show cause at a public hearing on June 5th, 2025, as to why the structures on the properties as stipulated should not be condemned. Item 1, 5312 Elliott Road, Lake Charles. Item 2, 5352 Elliott Road, Lake Charles. 3, south of 5260 Elliott Road, Lake Charles. 34, 3370 San Sess Road, Lake Charles. 5, 4945 Weaver Road, Lake Charles. 6, 7649 and 7838 Longyon Road, Bell City. 7, 1255 Dun Ferry Road, Sulphur. 8, 4812 Edgar Road, Carles. 9, 3909 Yellow Rose Lane, Carles. 10, 6933 Willis Morrow Road, Carles. 11, 4017 South Begless Parkway, Sulphur. I've got a motion on all bullets by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Stelly. Any questions? Any discussion? Those items carry. 3A, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated March 20th, 2025. I have a motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Lewis. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. 3B, approve the budget committee report dated April 24th, 2025. Mr. Andrew Pont?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, the budget committee of the police jury met today at 5:15 PM and recommended the following items be approved. Number one, Ward 1, $45,000, Consolidated Gravity Drainage District. Number two, of East Calhousie for costs associated with the purchase of a new spray buggy and equipment trailer. Item two was Ward 2, $17,185, Ward 2 Fire Protection District, number one, matching funds for the purchase and installation of a new engine for a fire truck. Item three, Ward 8, $100,000, Ward 8 Fire Protection District 2, for costs associated with the purchase of a new rescue truck. Item four, economic development, $8,286, visit Lake Charles for costs associated with the World LNG and Gas Series Summit. Item five was economic development, $15,000, Louisiana High School Athletic Association for costs associated with the 2025 Louisiana High School Athletic Association's Boys Basketball Championship. And item six, economic development, $25,000 for Louisiana High School Rodeo Associations for costs associated with the high school and junior high school rodeo. That concludes my report and I move on behalf of committee. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Andrew Pont, for your motion and a second by Mr. Stelly. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. Item 3C, adopt the resolution approving contracts for services between Ward 4 Fire Protection District number two and various facilities within the Rose Bluff Industrial Area. We'll go with Mr. Quinn for the motion and a second by Mr. Abshire. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. Item 4A, adopt the resolution approving an act of donation agreement for the Opelousas Street Improvements Project. I have a motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Smith. I got a question, Mr. Guillory.
I was just going to check to see, not on this project, but on the project itself, if they have a date, time, where they're going to have everything built about toward the end of the year, maybe?
I'd ask Mr. Wainwright if he has a date on that.
You're talking about for the completion of Opelousas Street, the widening?
No, no, just the project except the QT.
Oh, that, no, sir, I don't, I don't have anything specific on when they, they will be finished. They're moving fast, they're moving a lot of dirt, but we don't, we don't really get their timeline per se.
Thank you, Mr. Wainwright. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. All right, so like I said, we have any further discussion? Any question? That item carries. 4B, adopt resolutions approving the following agreements for the East Calhousie Parish Consolidated Waterworks Project. One, permanent public facility servitude agreements. And two, act of donation of a permanent public facility servitude and permanent access servitude agreement. I've got a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Lewis. Any questions? Discussion? Item carries. 4C, adopt resolutions approving act of donation agreements for the Baghdad Road Improvement Project. Motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Lewis. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. 6B, advertise for requests for proposals for a one-stop operator for the American Job Center. Motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Ms. Easton. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. 6C, advertise for requests for qualifications for retail services for the Calhousie Point Landing Bait and Convenience Store. Motion by Ms. Easton and a second by Mr. Smith. Any question? Any discussion? That item carries. 6D, advertise for bids for Big Wood Stark's Road Bridge Replacement. Motion by Mr. Markentail and a second by Mr. Lewis. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. 6C, approve payment of all current invoices and advise regarding budget to actual comparison. Motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Bowers. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. 6B, advertise for requests for proposals for a one-stop operator for the American Job Center. Motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Ms. Easton. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. 6C, approve payment of all current invoices and advise regarding budget to actual comparison. Motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Bowers. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. 6B, advertise for requests for proposals for a one-stop operator for the American Job Center. Motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Ms. Easton. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. 6C, advertise for requests for qualifications for retail services for the Calhousie Point Landing Bait and Convenience Store. Motion by Ms. Easton and a second by Mr. Smith. Any question? Any discussion? That item carries. 6D, advertise for bids for Big Wood Stark's Road Bridge Replacement. Motion by Mr. Markentail and a second by Mr. Lewis. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. 6E, adopt a resolution on qualification statements for engineering and technical service for bridge reconstruction projects. After review of the qualifications, staff recommends Oakland Associates, Blue Wing Civil Consulting, CH Finstermaker and Associates, Meyer and Associates, Principal Engineering and Waggoner Engineering be awarded contracts after negotiations are completed. Got a motion by Mr. Barti and a second by Mr. Bowers. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. 6F, action on bids for three 2025 or newer four-wheel drive, one-half-ton extended cab pickup trucks. I've got, excuse me, staff recommends the low bid of Bolton Ford in the amount of $126,985 be accepted. Motion by Ms. Easton and a second by Mr. Burley. Any questions? Any discussion? Item carries. 6G, action on bids for two 2025 or newer one-half-ton extended cab pickup trucks. Staff recommends the low bid of Bolton Ford in the amount of $77,990 be accepted. I've got a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Ms. Easton. Any questions? Any discussion? Item carries. 6H, adopt a resolution accepting the 901 Lake Shore Drive Hurricane Repair Project as substantially complete. Motion by Mr. Lewis and a second by Mr. Landry. Any questions? Any discussion? Item carries. 6I, adopt the resolution accepting the Magnolia Building Hurricane Repair Project as substantially complete. Motion by Mr. Lewis and a second by Mr. Landry. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. 6J, adopt the resolution accepting East Calhousie Parish Road and Drainage Rehabilitation as substantially complete. Motion by Mr. Barti and a second by Mr. Markentail. I've got any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. Well, I have a point of personal privilege I'd like to take. Ms. Joyce, Ms. Christine, Ms. Joyce Wilson, I, I do the hype, it's weird. I was like, I know. I was like, that's not Joyce Wilson.
Hi, I'm Christina Joyce Wilson, your HR director here. We have an upcoming citizen event that we really want to share with you and, or share with our citizens. And next Tuesday evening, that's April 29th, from 5 to 7, we're inviting all of our citizens to join us for a very family-friendly event at the Burton Complex. We're calling it Eagle Expo. You might have even seen some of our social media posts about it. This is an event where our citizens can learn all about our services and meet the dedicated team members behind them, just really all in one place. It's kind of a one-stop shop place. We'll have things like Tuck, Touch a Truck Experience for kids. We have interactive department booths. We'll have department bingo and rival prizes. You might be asking, why are we doing this, though? Why is this a focus? Our citizens shared in the most recent citizen survey that they want to be aware of what they need to do and whom they need to speak with when it comes to doing parish business. Basically, we wanted to create a space to do just that. It's all about connecting to our community and our community connecting to us and educating them all about the services that we provide. So, I've already spoken to a few of you about attending Tuesday evening and I thank you for coming or planning to attend. But I also encourage you, if you could, to tell your friends, your family, and your constituents about it. Let them just come learn and connect with us. So, wanted to share with you a little bit about the Eagle Expo.
Thank you. Mr. Guillory?
I just wanted to say, those that, those that was on the survey that asked about it, have you reached out to them to also have them come?
Well, that survey was anonymous, right? So, our communications and media team completed that and so we weren't able to reach out to them, but we took that feedback and said, okay, hey, what can we do with that? So, this is one of the events that we have planned.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Thanks.
So, I got one more thing real quick, sir. I would, I'd like to express my condolences to the McKay family from the Nibbous Bluff Venton area. Venton area. Mr. Thor McKay, he served on the water board from 2019 until just recently. The McKay family is very, very big and very active, all servants of the, of the public. But, but Thor was, he was a bit, he was kind of like his name, man. He, it fit him. I don't know if ever, if anybody remembers on the news back in 2016 when we had the floods with the waters coming from Sabine, the guy that dug and put the dirt around his home? He was the guy who did that. And the reason he did that is because everything in his home was, was custom-made from wood, harvested from the Sabine River, and there was no way he was ever going to get that back. And so he said, that's the type of guy he was. He rented a piece of equipment, got a guy, and he put a levee around his house. And that house is still sitting there and that's the kind of guy he was. And he was family. He was a distant cousin of mine and I know he's going to be missed. So again, prayers for the Thor McKay family. Thank you.